Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our work session. Let's, Madam Clerk, could you read the row?
Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Morrissey, Mr. Schimpf.
Here.
Mrs. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Mrs. Jewen.
Here.
All right, thank you.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right. Just to be completely transparent, we have two council members that are not able to participate in this part of the process, whether it be for conversations about locations or having someone that they're related to. So, the two council members have abstained from any conversation, any investigation, any comments. They are totally abstained from that part, and that's what their legal responsibility is to do as well. So, we thank them for identifying that already. Mr. Jacobs, I don't know. He should be here in a few minutes, hopefully. But, without further ado, let's get started with our presentation. But, before that, Noel, do you want to quickly talk about the process that we utilized thus far? And then, we'll turn it over for our presentations.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. And yeah, just to give them the ultimate amount of time, essentially went out for an RFP. The WDC and a group with Main Street Convention Visitors Bureau and city staff then met, reviewed them, made a recommendation. At the last council work session, the council did ask for presentations to come before them, and so, we're at that point today to have the three entities make their presentations.
And we also want to start this off by saying thank you. When you take a look at the way the downtown has completely transformed over the last ten to twelve years to becoming a place where people may want to avoid to being a place where around the state, people are talking about it. And to have three proposals of investments for downtown, to me, is a win for the city of Waterloo and the Cedar Valley. So, without further ado and all my rambling, I would like to call up our first presentation from Bicycle Works.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Would it be appropriate to make a comment at this point?
Sure.
I just want to say that I also appreciate all three of these companies coming forward to do this, and I wish we had three public markets that all three of them could just go into and make it a little easier, so.
Yeah, and you know, there's one public market, but as far as trying to move through the process to make sure that, you know, folks on here either expand or have a place downtown, I think that's something that we should do and what has been made and committed to moving forward after we get through this process. So, please come forward. Noel, what's the timeframe?
We have twenty-five minutes for each one. We figure today, fifteen minutes for presentation, ten minutes for questions, and some variation.
Okay, all right, all right.
Shall I identify myself first?
Yes, yes.
Gregory Young, 316 West Third Street. Hello, council. We're very grateful to you for this opportunity to present our proposal for the Public Market Building. We are Greg and Jessica Young, owners of Waterloo Bicycle Works. Some of you might recognize us as being part of the downtown community for the last decade. We've been busy for the last ten years doing things such as saving the historic Kistner Building from demolition after the 2008 flood. The Kistner Building now houses our residence, commercial space, and two apartments, one of them that we use as an Airbnb. Also, Jessica here led the charge to save the Wonder Bread Building, and when her group, the Save the Wonder Bread Building group, was challenged by then-Mayor Buck Clark to, if they wanted to save that building, they should come up with something to come in there. Jessica's actually the one who reached out to breweries around the state, and she literally is the person who recruited Dave Morgan, who eventually brought Single Speed to the Wonder Bread Building. So, we've also been involved in other ways. We helped start the Cedar Valley Bicycle Collective. We've been volunteers with Main Street Waterloo. Jessica is currently the president of the Board of Directors for the Downtown Farmers' Market. She's also on the Board of Directors for the Cedar Trails Partnership. We are Waterloo people, and we chose downtown Waterloo as the place to establish our business. And now, we've successfully operated and grown Waterloo Bicycle Works over the last four years, and we're hoping for this opportunity to grow it even bigger. We live right across the street from the Public Market Building and are very familiar with all that goes on there and in the plaza. In the fall of 2016, we were part of a group that came to the city council and expressed our concerns over what would happen with the Public Market Building when it was vacated by the last tenant. And we met with the city planner several times. It was kind of a consensus at that time that we should look for a grocery store. That's what everybody wanted. With the city planner's permission, members of our group actually reached out to several businesses to try to find some interest in the building. What we heard back was that most of those people felt like the demographics didn't work for a market downtown yet, so there wasn't enough interest. After watching it sit empty for over a year, we decided that we should step up and offer to make something positive happen with the space. So, here we have the proposal. It's the Bike Shop Plus. This is a concept that around the globe has proven successful in adding to the bike shop to make it more of a destination and a gathering place. Many times, it's a coffee shop or beer hall that shares space with the bike shop. We started with the idea of adding a cafe, but wanted more to fill that space and make it more vibrant. That's where Raygun comes in. We had been in touch with Raygun a year ago when we had vacant space in our building trying to get them to come to Waterloo. Things didn't work out then. The timing wasn't right, and we took on another tenant instead. But, we went back to them about this idea, and Mike Draper of Raygun and Jessica came up with the idea of Raygun setting up their store and keeping it stocked, but we would staff and run sales through our cash register. This works because of the open floor plan. It's a win-win for everybody. This works for Raygun because they get into the Cedar Valley market without having to hire a full staff. It's good for us because it provides us with a steady income. They estimate they can do $10,000 worth of business per month, year-round. Sharing the space with Raygun helps us retain staff then in the off-season. Raygun has a huge following with over 57,000 followers on Facebook and over 35,000 followers on Instagram. They currently have locations in Des Moines, Iowa City, Kansas City, and Cedar Rapids. The cafe will also help us get through the slow season. If you ever been in our quarter of downtown in January or February on a weekend, you'd see that the parking lots fill up fast around the sportsplex with families coming to soccer, basketball, and lacrosse tournaments. We'll be right there, open to accommodate them. We'll also be there for any events taking place in the plaza. We'll be there every Saturday morning, spring, summer, and fall, at 8:00 AM when the farmers' market opens up. This is an important part of our proposal because we'll be open seven days a week during hours that matter and are most useful to the users of the Expo Grounds and the sportsplex. This multifaceted combination creates that symbiotic relationship the city planner asked for and spoke of needing for the next tenant of the Public Market Building. We plan to have family-friendly events, bicycle clinics and classes, live music, rides, movies, art exhibits, and more. We'd like to work with the RAI to rent the Expo Plaza for bicycle events as well. We'll work with organizations to try to get the highest utilization of the kitchen with things such as cooking or nutrition classes. There's been much talk about creating a bike share in the Cedar Valley. We would be open to creating a space for such a program and providing upkeep and maintenance. I know that Tavis Hall of the Convention and Visitors Bureau is real keen on having some bike share in downtown Waterloo. He asked us earlier this year to actually apply for a grant to get some of those bike share bikes, but we couldn't accommodate that in our current space, but this would make that possible. The Cedar Valley has invested a great deal in bicycle infrastructure, and our growth and proposed use of the space would encourage its utilization. If you do the numbers, our proposal comes in at the least expense to the Waterloo taxpayers. Because the building is essentially move-in ready for us, we're not asking for any money upfront for building renovation. Because we can be in the building within thirty days of lease signing, the clock starts very soon. This time next year, we're already negotiating rent payments. Other than putting up some bollards at the curb cuts near the building, we don't plan to make any changes to the parking layout. We intend to create livable wage jobs, starting with four full-time and several part-time positions, as well as utilizing the janitorial service from North Star Community Services. But, numbers aside, you should also be deciding which of these proposals is the best fit for downtown Waterloo. A healthy, vibrant downtown consists of a mix of different types of businesses: retail, dining, entertainment. You needn't look no further than the parcade in Cedar Falls to see how well that can work. But, if you were to take time to walk around downtown Waterloo and ask business owners what they think our downtown needs the most, I think most of those people are going to tell you that we need more retail. And our plan brings more new retail, not only in the Public Market Building, but also in the space that we vacate in the Kistner Building. Already got a tenant lined up. So, now, if you would like, we could take a look at our ideas for layout and design. What's there to say here, Josh?
Just that you can see that it's all an open space that's just shared, and so, people could eat, and I mean, they could bring their bike, eat, you know, look at shirts and coffee cups and things from Raygun. And then, this is the next couple ones. We sent these out, but just have some kind of inspiration photos for the different ideas. The orange is where Waterloo Bicycle Works would set up shop, and then, the blue is Raygun, and then, the yellow is where the cafe area would be. And then, there's just some different kind of ideas for signage.
So, everything we do is for the betterment of our community in mind. As I said previously, we're Waterloo people by choice. We choose to live and work here because we love our community and want Waterloo to thrive. Again, I really appreciate this opportunity to actually make our presentation to the decision-makers.
All right. Thank you so much, and I do remember that group that came in was about a year and a half ago or so, and so, we took that very seriously, and so, thank you so much for all that you both do for downtown. Questions, council? Anyone have any questions?
I have one, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Thank you for coming. Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate that. I did have a question about Raygun. Did you, do you have a geographic commitment with them so that they won't open another store within so many miles of your place at the Public Market? Or is there any agreement or any discussion along those lines?
I don't think there's been any discussion about that. I just know that they have looked at this area before, and they were quite ready to make that commitment.
Yeah.
Have a letter of.
But, we do have a letter of intent. I mean, he's committed to this if we get the lease.
My concern is, can they open shop at your place, which doesn't require any staffing on their part, and then, turn around and go open in Hudson or Cedar Falls or any place else? Is there anything in your agreement that would prohibit that?
I'd admit, we don't have that in an agreement.
Yeah, I think.
That would be worked out.
That's something you could do.
Once we would get.
Okay, good.
Get moved forward with the building, but I know that, I don't think that, in talking with him, I don't think that that's something that they would, I don't think they would want to have another one so close unless it was just wildly successful, but yeah, he indicated that this would be good.
Am I, so are you, are you asking if there, you know, like in Des Moines downtown, there is the store and there's folks? Is that what you want?
No, what I'm saying is, I don't, I don't want them to come in here, just put t-shirts on the shelf because they're not making a commitment of staffing at your location, and then, turn right around and open a fully-staffed shop in downtown Cedar Falls or whatever.
The square footage of this that they would want to put in would, he said it would be just as run as if it was one of their locations. So, when they put out, you know, a new shirt, they wouldn't, they would say it's at the Des Moines, Cedar Rapids, Iowa City, Waterloo location. So, it, it would be like a full store, except for he would be paying us to staff it.
Okay.
Okay.
So, it's an actual location.
Yeah, I guess I didn't, I thought it was originally was in our proposal that they're actually paying us for floor space, and we get a percentage of sales.
Sure.
I'm not sure why he would want to compete himself anywhere close by. Hasn't done it in Des Moines. They only have one store there, so if they were gonna, if they were gonna have multiple stores in one city, you'd think Des Moines would be prime for that, but now you're giving them something to think about.
So, here, this would be the store.
As far as we know, that's his commitment.
And that's, I think, the way that they have it in Cedar Rapids, maybe, like because I think it shares a space with a coffee shop or something.
Do they? Okay.
Mr. Jacobs.
I apologize I was late if you've already answered this, but what is the, what are the wages for the full-time and part-time positions?
Our intention is to start full-time at $15 an hour, and actually, I'm already negotiating with somebody to, to work for me, even if we stay in our current space, at $15 an hour because we need help. We're growing that much.
And what about the part-time position?
I, I don't.
Kind of yet to be.
I think my stepfather-in-law would kill me if I paid anything less than $10 an hour.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, council?
I do have one other one.
Yes, ma'am.
No, you got one. You go. I don't remember, and we've talked before and seen your presentation, it was great, but I don't remember seeing a financial budget. Have you, I know you say that you would like the rent to be waived for the first year. Have you talked about paying for the utilities and everything else?
We assume that we'll be paying for utilities. We asked for a seventy percent rebate for three years on the property taxes. Beyond that, we're not asking for any special favors. We don't have, because of the open floor plan, we don't need to do any kind of build-out, so we estimate $10,000 to $15,000 just to set up some counters and workbenches and Raygun will bring beer and bring in their own stuff.
But, I'm talking more about your monthly budget, your weekly budget, because I understand the utilities and some of the overheads.
We're aware of what the utilities are.
Okay, good, good.
Thought long and hard about that, so.
And we talked to, we've talked to people about cleaning services and mats and all of that kind of thing, and.
Right, so yeah, no, we didn't put in the details of all of that, but we've certainly worked that out for ourselves.
But, you're least aware of it. That's good. Okay, good. Thank you.
Mr. Amos, did you have anything?
No, I didn't.
Ms. Klein. Mr. Schimpf, good.
No, just, I guess, what, what kind of products does Raygun sell?
They have shirts. It's mostly t-shirts, but then, they do like onesies and bibs, and they do coffee cups and postcards and stickers and.
Have you seen cutting boards?
Yeah.
Household stuff like that?
And in Waterloo Bicycle Works, we have an area where we have all handmade things. It's just one of the rooms because my mom and I had a shop before that, that sold that kind of thing, and so, I think it would be a good mixture of things because we would have Raygun, but we would still have a few of those handmade items as well.
May I come in on that?
Yeah, they have a really interesting shop in downtown Des Moines as well. Been there a couple times, but one more comment.
Let me just add that Raygun is so wildly popular with, I think, especially the younger people. Took my daughters to Kansas City, and we were gonna go shopping, and the one place they wanted to go was Raygun, so it'd be just a great addition.
Yeah, we agree.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much. All right, we will.
Thanks again.
Yeah, thank you. We will continue moving forward. We have a presentation by Lark Brewery.
Hi, guys.
Hello.
Thank you, city council and Mayor Hart, for having us here today. We've got a few of us speaking. I just want to take the first couple minutes and introduce myself.
Okay.
My name's Sean Christensen. I'm the co-founder, captain, and head brewer of Lark Brewing Company. Darren Beck and I, we met for the first time about two years ago. We discussed the possibility of teaming up and creating a craft brewery. After an extensive time spent on conceptual development and planning, we launched Lark Brewing in Waterloo in October of 2016. Our concept was simple: create a beer brand in Waterloo by producing a premium product and a welcoming tasting room with a socially responsible platform to include and immerse the community into our vision. Our vision was to include all branches of craft beer lovers while giving back to the community in which it supports. Since opening, we have hosted numerous homebrewing competitions, helped fundraisers for numerous local charities and organizations, created events to educate and enlighten the Cedar Valley on beer knowledge, and most importantly, grown our portfolio of fantastic beverages to share throughout the community as well as statewide. By holding our product to a top-shelf standard, we have managed to become the highest-rated brewery in the Cedar Valley. We are now ready to endeavor on phase two of our plan: to secure a location that will support growth in foot traffic and have the space needed to expand our production for further statewide distribution. Our goal has always been to put Waterloo, Iowa on the map as a craft beer destination location. There is no better way to do this than securing the Public Market Building as our final destination. I want to note, and this is pretty important to me, that this is the best, in the best interest of Single Speed as well. It is a known fact that cities who choose to condense brewery locations reap the greatest rewards. To have multiple breweries within walking distance provides a focused destination for the booming craft beer tourism movement. By having multiple breweries within a walking distance drives more beer tourism activists to visit Waterloo. In essence, all craft breweries in town will gain more business by being closer together in a physical location. Out of all of the 377 customers that have signed our petition just by coming in our tasting room over the last couple of weeks, their most common comment to me was, they would visit both breweries more often if we were located closer in proximity. This will increase both businesses' revenues, thus increasing the revenue of the city of Waterloo, and for this primary reason, I personally believe that Lark Brewing should be awarded the Public Market Building. I'm gonna turn my time over to the rest of our crew. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, council members, city staff. My name's Mike Youngblood. I live at 401 Rose Bay in Hudson. I've come before you with several different hats. Today, I'm here as council for Bermuda, friend of both Darren and Sean, and quite frankly, as a guy who loves great beer, no matter who makes it. The city of Waterloo very recently went to great lengths to assist Mr. Morgan in securing the Wonder Bread Building and completing a magnificent renovation to the dilapidated property to pave the way for the still-new Single Speed Brewery. Now, this Single Speed Building's over 30,000 square feet. We're not talking about a small project here, and what a great job they've done with the assistance of the city. Now, several months later, Mr. Morgan's looking to the city to provide him with more incentives and more square footage in downtown Waterloo to produce kombucha. Now, kombucha is brewed with the very same equipment that's used to brew beer, and actually, Sean sells kombucha at Lark and has even brewed kombucha himself at home, he says. There's currently only one kombucha brewery in the state of Iowa, and that's Wild Culture Kombucha in Iowa City. They've been open for nearly two years, but have yet to open a tasting room because the market, even in Iowa City, doesn't support it. Now, it seems to me that prudence would suggest that Mr. Morgan could very easily utilize some of his 30,000 square feet in the Wonder Bread Building to begin brewing and selling his kombucha there, which is a business and a product that is not only untested in this market, but seems yet unproven in the state of Iowa. Additionally, they've already got a sidecar coffee inside that location. Frankly, I see Mr. Morgan's proposal as being nothing, nothing more than a defensive measure to prevent another brewery from locating in the downtown district and thus stifling competition. Unfortunately, this is very short-sighted. In fact, bringing another brewery to the downtown area will create a synergy that will benefit both businesses, and as a result, it'll benefit the city of Waterloo as well, just as Sean has described. We appreciate you guys taking this into consideration and looking at, you know, all of these proposals and giving Lark the opportunity to be here today. Thanks.
Council, my name's Eric Birch. I'm from Lost Island Water Park here in Waterloo, and I'm here as kind of an anecdotal witness. We, if you had not visited last summer, entered into an agreement with Lark Brewing to produce a unique, custom beverage for the water park that did much better than expected, and we would like to continue to see its success grow. They were initially only gonna produce one batch, and we saw such success with the product that we ended up needing them to double the amount that was produced. And so, just as an example of not just the owners of the property telling you how great they've become, but as a, as a consumer who was selling a product that they produced, it did very well for us. So, we would be interested in being one of the investors involved in this project should it come to the public market.
Good afternoon. Darren Beck with Bermuda Companies, and what I'd like to do is pass these out to the council members so they've got a visual aid. I didn't do a PowerPoint presentation, and last week's packets included our, our letter from our investor support, our floor plan, our actual proposal, and some other, some other information. This packet here is new information that can be paired up with what I gave you last week. So, what I'd like to do real quick is just run down a couple of quick points, some factual points, and then, talk to you specifically about our proposal. Waterloo's first established brewery is Lark. Lark is the highest-rated brewery in the Cedar Valley. It's respected as a unique premium brewer throughout the state of Iowa. We have statewide distribution channels already established. The move for us will accelerate our growth, add to our distribution and brewing capacity. Our current location is too small to meet our current demand, and we're gonna have to move. We absolutely, positively have to move, and we should have moved already. The new location is needed now, and we really, really, really want to stay in Waterloo if we can. Our proposal summary bullet points are pretty simple. The new, the new Lark will be a full-service restaurant and brewery featuring world-class barbecue. Lark to at least quadruple capacity after making the move. Our total investment, once we get completely open wherever we're going, is gonna top probably about a million dollars. We have new local investment partners ready to go with public market approval by city council. Financing for the project is provided by me, selling up to 50% of the brewery to local partners. Lark, we're offering the city $238,914 in rent, years one through five. Verd is offering you $192,000. Lark is offering to rent ten years with a purchase, with an option to purchase the building as soon as possible. We've asked. We've asked for facade grant money to help with signage, which is negotiable on our part. We've asked for, for help with additional grease traps if there's anything needed by the city. If the city determines more is needed in that area, we'd like to get some help with that. Lark is offering to take a lead role and work with the other city organizations such as Main Street and the others that utilize the Plaza. We would like to help maximize its potential. Lark would bring the power of Bermuda's thirty-five years of experience to the project. Lark would increase brewing capacity by again, at least four times to fill our current statewide distribution demand. Uh, new Lark would allow us to add canning, a canning line adding a whole new product, uh, to distribute for us as well. A new canning operation and expansion distribution would come with the newly expanded Lark, and Lark would employ thirty to thirty-five people year-round and provide jobs, uh, provide more jobs than any of the other proposals. So the selection criteria that was put together by the city staff and WDC, from what I understand, was based on eight points of criteria, and I wanna cover those eight points real quick. First one was established performance in downtown Waterloo. This is a very subjective thing to contemplate. The definition of subjective means influenced by personal feelings, tastes or opinions. This seems to be exactly what took place in the WDC meeting when discussing the proposals that we weren't allowed to present in. The only truly established business in downtown Waterloo of the three proposals is the bike shop. Lark is an established Waterloo business, but we are not in downtown at this time. Uh, but we are in business and we're well-established. Verve is the only one of the three proposals that is not even in business at this time. Their entire proposal is a startup plan for an unproven fad called kombucha. My company's thirty-two-year history in the Cedar Valley, the taxes we've paid and the literally thousands of people who've worked for our companies over the years should speak for itself. No one at the local level has ever performed at a higher level of revenue and taxes paid than the aggregate of Bermuda's establishments over the years. A progressive proposal and product. I wasn't sure what this was about, um, but I go back and remind you that Lark is the Cedar Valley's first established brand and brewery, uh, and product, and is the highest rated. Um, Lark will create the highest number of new jobs in Waterloo now and with future expansion. We're proposing seven days a week of operation to the community as a restaurant as well as a brewery. Um, our finances are in place. Our proposal did not include a letter of credit because our investor base would be putting in the cash themselves. This eliminates the need for borrowing money to complete the project and thus makes it the obvious better choice. Lark enjoys a relatively small amount of debt in comparison to its overall investment, and this means an established business without big bank payments. The fourth point in the WDC's recommendation was strong team of investors. Well, I've told you I intend to sell up to fifty percent of the brewery's stock to make it happen. Together, Sean and I will remain owners of about the other fifty percent. Our investors are high-profile, local businessmen like Eric here, and I'm sure most of you would know all of them. We have more people wanting to invest at this point in the Lark Brewery than I'm gonna be able to say yes to. It's a nice problem to have. Finances should be no issue for Lark at this time. The city has invested wisely into the public market building and other projects in the immediate area. However, we feel strongly that adding Lark Brewery to the neighborhood offers less risk to the city by not having all of the city's eggs in one operator's basket, so to speak. Suitable use of space. When breweries locate next to each other, it's good for tourism. We've already talked about that. Verve's proposal is more about canning and distribution than it is about creating traffic for the area. Downtown needs more dining options to help the overall tourism aspect of downtown. Downtown is arriving, and it's beautiful, it's wonderful, but there's more to do down here. A tea room, coffee house and part-time bistro are probably not the best way to complement what is and should be happening on the Plaza and in the Riverloot District. Suitable use of space was another point in the WDC's recommendation. So when breweries, um, locate, hang on. I, I copied and pasted that incorrectly. Strong lease rates. Um, when you compare the lease rates side by side, here's what you get in the first five years, and again, I'll reiterate that. Two hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and fourteen is our proposal. One hundred and ninety-two thousand is their proposal. We did not see anyone else's proposal when we made our proposal. We put our best foot forward and felt that we were putting a proposal in that could be negotiated at any time, um, with us. We're not sure, uh, how a recommendation to take less money makes sense to the city council. Compatible to existing uses in downtown. I'm not sure what this even means, but I can't imagine anything more compatible than what we're proposing. Other things that I feel the city council should consider when making this decision is our proposal is a genuine proposal offered out of immediate need, not a defensive move to a perceived threat. When we first looked at the public market, we were told we could present and negotiate our proposal, and a decision would be made in March. The reality has truly set us back, but we strongly feel Lark at public market is worth fighting for. That's why we've waited the extra time and put our project on hold. We probably should have moved our business by now, but we've been, we've been waiting for this opportunity. Our need to find a new home for Lark is immediate, as it was in January when this whole process started. We have remained engaged as we truly believe it is the best proposal for the property and the best use of the property. Our entire proposal is negotiable. Uh, we too want what's best for Waterloo. We want to keep our brewery in Waterloo, and we want to do it in the public market now, not next year. Our petition, uh, we have some petitions signed by folks that we'd be happy to give to the city council for your review. And most importantly, I sincerely wanna thank Mayor Hart and the city council for agreeing to listen to our proposal today. Thank you very much. Be happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
Um, I'm sorry, I, I should know, but I don't. Where is Lark, um, located right now?
So Lark Brewing is-
And why are you moving?
Okay, so Lark Brewing is currently in the lower level of, um, the Beck's on University Avenue location that we closed a few months ago.
Okay.
So the need to move is location.
Mr. Mayor, um, the thirty to thirty-five jobs that you're talking about, those are part-time, full-time and wages?
It's, it's a blend of, uh, full and part-time people. It's approximately three hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of annual payroll.
Yes, sir.
So if I could follow up, per hour, what would, what would be your targeted range of pay?
So our kitchen staff ranges anywhere from twelve to sixteen dollars per hour. Our front-of-house staff runs anywhere from the current minimum if they're a tipped employee. Our average employee makes twenty-eight to thirty-four dollars an hour with tips on the front of house. Um, and of course, we'd have salaried managers and brewers, that kinda thing.
Do you have an estimate of how long it's, it would require you to build out your planned restaurant?
Well, we, we originally set out to make my Waterloo days if it was possible, but the decision got made timely enough. Um, depending on how the plumbing goes, uh, we have to tear up a little concrete to make plumbing accommodations for the brewery, but, uh, we'd love to be done in ninety days.
Yes, sir. One other question. I noticed you, um, talked about the grease trap issue. Do you foresee a problem there or something, or?
I have to admit, I failed to look into the grease trap situation when I was there, and when I made the proposal, I felt like I just needed to include it, cuz I'm not even sure what's there for a grease trap now. It, it may already be fine, just the way it is. I just know that the city is, um, moving towards larger grease traps for obvious reasons.
Anyone else?
I would also like to add on the employment question, uh, that Mr. Jacobs asked. All right, you know, being part of Bermuda means that people have, um, w- when they work for us and they're full-time or salaried, they have access to 401K, healthcare and all the other paid time off, all the other benefits that you would expect that would come with a reputable company like that.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we'll have a presentation from Verve.
Hey there, I'm Andy Footman from Sidecar Coffee. I'd like to start by talking about an ancient fermented product that was made exclusively at home by health-conscious people until not too long ago, when an entrepreneur figured out how to put it on store shelves, and all of a sudden it was everywhere. Yogurt. Fermented food helps digestion and the high acidity helps eradicate harmful bacteria, so people have been using fermentation for centuries in all kinds of ways. Yogurt was made at home in small batches for those reasons for thousands of years, until in nineteen forty-seven, Daniel Carasso introduced Danin Fruit on the Bottom Yogurt. And now, it seems like yogurt's always been there and it's everywhere. But there was a time when it wasn't. Uh, in the same way, kombucha is a fermented product that has been made at home for centuries by people looking for the benefits of fermentation and the tastiness of sweet tea. It's just tea, sugar and live and active bacteria and yeast cultures plus time. It's good for your body and it's exploding in popularity. It's a six hundred million dollar market now. It is expected to double by twenty twenty. There's, uh, one company in Iowa, and actually it's, uh, Shack Tea Kombucha. They make, uh, kombucha for grocery stores, and if you go to Hy-Vee, you can see them on the shelves there. Wild Culture's a little different. They have a, they have a license for producing it as an alcoholic beverage, so you have to be twenty-one to buy, uh, Wild Culture. But Shack Tea is also in Fairfield. They started in two thousand and eleven. They're in grocery stores across the state. Uh, so there's one company, and by contrast, there's eighty-five beer breweries in Iowa. Uh, so in nineteen ninety-six, a guy named GT Dave began commercially producing kombucha, and his company exploded in growth. Now you can find kombucha everywhere. Kombucha is the number one selling product in the entire company of Whole Foods Market. And you can find it more and more places here in Iowa. In fact, uh, I just found out a couple of weeks ago, you can now find six flavors of kombucha from two different companies at Fairway, which is great for me. Now's the right time for kombucha industry to grow in Iowa. Uh, Howard Schultz bought Starbucks in nineteen eighty-seven. So when do you think Iowa got its very first standalone Starbucks store? Not gonna ask you to actually answer the question, but it was two thousand and two. So it seems like it's been here forever, but really, it was brand new not that long ago. So we're in the same timeframe with kombucha. Somebody's gonna jump in and grab that market, and the demographics are great. It's Whole Foods customers, young, health-conscious professionals. The city that welcomes that industry is going to have a nearly unique attraction as well as containers going out all over the state that say proudly brewed in our city on those containers. We think the city should be Waterloo. The time is right downtown, and we'd love to put our product in the public market. Uh, so a little history of how we got here. Brent is my friend for a long time and, uh, and we worked together, we're partners in Sidecar. And three or four years ago, he suggested to me that we try to make kombucha in Sidecar because on his travels, he had, uh, he had it in the hotels. So I had never heard of it, so I looked into it, and we started to try to make it, and it was terrible. And, uh, and we started looking into selling it at Sidecar. Well, it turns out the, it's a little complicated. So then, not too long after that, um, we're also friends with Dave, and he was gonna, you know, he's starting this awesome project you know all about in Single Speed. So I told him about kombucha, and I said, "Hey Dave, why don't we try to make kombucha in Single Speed?" He said, "Well, maybe we could look into it." So, uh, so I went to San Diego, I went to this conference and learned all about commercial kombucha production a couple of years ago, about eight months before we opened in, uh, in the Single Speed factory. And then I got back, and Dave had done a little research of his own, and he said, he said, "No, you can't do it in Single Speed." Because the bacteria, the, the yeast that are in kombucha are specifically wild yeast. Designed to be wild culture. So because of that, they typically avoid having it near a regular beer. So anyway, no big deal. That was just a setback for us, so we had to keep working on our project. So Alexander and I have been making it our Ridgeway shop just for ourselves, um, and trying to figure it out. And then about a year ago, we approached the city about, uh, public market. I don't know if you remember, but I-
I do.
-brought it to your office, and, uh, we tried it, and, uh, so then the process started, and here we are. So a quick overview of the details of our project. We'd like to divide this space between our kombucha and cold brew coffee brewery and a full-service bistro. You can see a little of the flavor we're looking for by searching Verve Kombucha on Facebook. We've tried to give a picture of our idea on Facebook. Uh, we propose to pay the build-out and equipment costs, which will total roughly six hundred thousand dollars. Attached to our proposal, you'll find a letter from a banker as requested indicating support for our project. We propose to take over the utility payments. As soon as the lease is signed, we propose to pay a stepped-up rent. Uh, no rent for the build-out in first six months of operation, two thousand a month for the rest of year one, three thousand a month for year two, four thousand a month thereafter for the duration of the lease. Uh, we've asked for a fifty thousand dollar grant to facilitate building improvements, which we're happy to take in the form of rent deferral, and for the rent-free use of the Plaza twelve times a year for music and brewery events as well as private events. We intend to apply for any TIF and CURA funds that may be available based on improvements to the building. Uh, we anticipate completing the project, uh, nine to twelve months after signing a lease. My teammates Dave and Brent are gonna talk specifically about our commitment to downtown Waterloo and why this is the right time, the right place and the right team for this project. Thanks.
Hey guys, how we doing? Dave was Single Speed here. Got it?
Yeah.
Dave Morgan was Single Speed here. Uh, gotta tell you, I didn't know I was gonna come in and defend myself so much today, or I might have, uh, got a little more focused before I came down. But typically, people, uh, talk about me in a more positive fashion. So I'm certain you guys all know about our project. Single Speed Brewing Company, just down the street. Uh, we are lucky enough to partner with the city of Waterloo on that, avoiding demolition, creating what we think is a pretty awesome space. Um, we also engaged Main Street Iowa, the State Historical Preservation Office and the National Park Service to make that project happen. I don't think I need to talk about that project anymore in, in this forum. You guys are, are welcome to ask questions about it as we move forward, but you guys all know what it is and where we're at and where we're going. I will talk about it in specific to how it relates to this new project, Verve Kombucha. Um, we opened in April of twenty seventeen. In the past year, you guys have seen it. We've grown exponentially in terms of both volume produced, um, volume sold and distribution territory covered. We're covering the majority of the state right now. Um, we're working to cover all of it. You know, we're just doing it the right way, one thing at a time. Um, in the next forty-five days, we will be adding a canning line to our operation, allowing us to get canned stating brewed in Iowa, Single Speed Brewing Company, Waterloo, Iowa, onto shelves across the state. We think that's pretty awesome. Now, about Verve Kombucha, this is, uh, yeah, this is Andy's vision that, uh, we pitched, yeah, you said it was about a year ago? We pitched together about a year ago, so it's not like this thing just came up overnight. This is a project that's been in motion, um, and we think can be a great addition to downtown Waterloo. Um, my role with kombucha, he talked about it. I'm not gonna get into science with you here, and I'm not gonna dispute anybody's claims, but I can tell you one thing, we don't want that in our facility. Symbiotic culture of bacteria and yeast, you don't want it in your typical later on tonight. You don't want it in your victory dance either. Um, it's something that we'd like to have off-location. So kombucha isn't beer, but fermentation's fermentation, packaging's packaging, distribution's distribution. I know how to do those things. That's why, that's why I'm joining the squad. Um, we also feel like we're doing things the right way from both an environmental sustainability perspective as well as a moral perspective. As we do this project, we will look to pursue energy and water, uh, water efficiencies aggressively, just like we did on our project over there. LEED certified gold. Um, as of twenty sixteen, there were only twelve of those breweries in the entire country with LEED certification. We're one of them now. Um, we're also Iowa Green Brewery Certified Platinum. We are the only brewery that is that, and they, if you ask them, they will tell you they created that category just for us. My role with Verve Kombucha will include running point and/or helping guide the following. Brewery design. I know how to do that. Um, it is not the exact same equipment as brewing, but there are a lot of commonalities amongst them. Fermentation and bright tank, packaging in particular. Um, equipment layout and product flow, equipment sourcing, flooring, plumbing, electrical. All of that stuff will have to take place, and it's very similar to how a brewery would be set up in terms of a beer brewery. Supply chain management, raw materials and packaging, production, fermentation. Um, yeah, the system tanks that we're purchasing are similar in many maze, many ways to some of the tanks that we own at Single Speed. Um, the packaging formats will also mimic those handled by Single Speed as we're looking to get into keg and can with this product. From a distribution end, we're talking about groceries and convenience stores, so we're ready to tackle those markets as well. Um, one last point that I think we don't talk about enough, and that's our fault as, as our team. We don't talk about the Sidecar expansion within this project, which would be growing another downtown Waterloo business. Cold brew would actually be made on location as well, and we would use that canning line to get cold brew on shelves across the state. I think the potential for that is, is large, and I think it could be a really cool thing for downtown Waterloo. Um, that's really all I've got, guys. Uh, I'm always willing to answer questions whether now or later, whenever you wanna do it, but, uh, you guys know I'm around. Thanks for letting us be here.
All right, thank you, David.
Brent Dahlstrom, uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. And, uh, Councilman Chimp and Mayor Hart, you, you touched on it at the beginning, and I think, no matter what, when we leave today, I think everyone should remember one thing. This is an exciting time for Waterloo. Uh, a proud, we should all be proud of, of what's happened, um, in downtown Waterloo. And when Andy tells a story about Starbucks, I, I think, I think some of us might have that similar feeling of how downtown feels today, right? Um, it, it was just, you know, ten years ago when Jim Slenick and I, and you could actually play back the tapes, when one of the council people at the time when we brought a large apartment complex idea to downtown Waterloo, the council, uh, person politely said, "Don't think that's going to work," right? I mean, that, that wasn't that long ago. I mean, that wasn't that long ago, right? And fast forward to today, when you just had one of the best hotels in the state of Iowa, and I think one of the most creative public-private partnerships around. And you have that opening, Dave's project downtown. You know, that's a community builder. That's a community changer, what he did, and has really brought kind of a Cedar Valley together. And so, I'm not just bringing up Dave. He's a humble guy, but that's been incredible for the area. And I'm just a proud supporter, investor in downtown. I'm excited for what we've done, and we were able to get a national award for our most recent project, and we're excited to keep on being a cheerleader for downtown. So for me, part of me has a little bit of heartbreak because I don't want this to be an us-versus-them thing. I think I'm hopeful that all three of us end up with an expansion and a project in downtown Waterloo. I think we need all of them. I think it would be great for the community if we could find a way to bring us all together in the space. For us, this is something we've been working on for a long time. And as someone that's bringing people to downtown and living here, there's a large competition for gaining those tenants, right? Gaining the people that work here, that live here. It's a competitive market, whether we're competing against our neighbors in Cedar Falls, or Des Moines, or Cedar Rapids, right? And we talk a lot about millennials and attracting them and doing things that they like. But, you know, I just went to a graduation last night, and that's not even millennials anymore. So now we're starting to attract the next generation. And we really believe this hits. And had the ability to meet with Feeny Main Street recently, and we talked a lot about the diversification of downtown. And I think some other people talked about that tonight as well. And I think to be different, to be bold, and start these new businesses and be the first of its kind, or, you know, second, third, early, right? When you go to San Diego, you couldn't believe it. My wife made me try it for the first time three years ago, but kombucha was, it's on tap there. It's part of the culture, and it's coming. And, you know, sometimes in Iowa, we get the rap of being a little late to the game, but I think that we can get ahead of this. There's just so many that came before us today, right? And so I wanted to talk about our team, but at the same time, I don't. I hope that you know what Dave has done, and Andy, what his success story with Sidecar. And I believe that, you know, that I've done a great job for downtown Waterloo and continue to do so. But it's not about us. It's about the people before that have been committed to downtown: Dan Waters, Bob Peterson, former mayors, former council people, current council people. And it's about all of them. And we believe that we're committed. We know we're committed to downtown. We couldn't be more committed as a group to downtown Waterloo. And that's one of the main things that we wanted to see such a great project in the space. Now Dave, he's extremely humble. So I just wanted to say, and we should get an article out about this, but he just went to the World Beer Fair, and this award has been only given to an Iowa brewery three times. Two times it was to a different Des Moines breweries, but he placed third in the entire world for his beer. And I mean, he should be applauded. He should be recognized as a true success story for our community. I think he has, and I think he will even more so moving forward. Thank you so much for having us today. Keep up the good work. You're doing so great. And public-private partnerships are what make all these projects possible. And thank you for everything you've done for me in the past and continue to do, and for anything in the future as well. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Council questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can we just, I don't know if Mr. Morgan is the correct person to ask, or Mr. Footman, how many jobs and what were the wages?
What we wrote in there was four full-time and 12 part-time jobs. And I would guess our wages are going to be, I mean, the whole thing is going to be very similar. Darren said like $12 to $16. I think that sounds very similar to what we would do. It's probably a little, it's probably a little different in terms of like, so I would, I would be the one running the kombucha part of it at first, but I'm not really looking to become like a full-time kombucha person. So ultimately, I would have to figure it out and then have another person do that job. So that probably would be a higher paid than all the other jobs, but...
Mr. Juwan.
I have a couple of questions, if I may.
Okay.
Your menu, is it going to include other things other than the kombucha?
Yes, I would definitely encourage you guys to check out our social media, @VerveKombucha. So we just cook some of the actual food we'll make there. So there's pictures on there of like short ribs with grilled lettuce. And there's pictures of some of the drinks we can make, because kombucha goes great with alcohol. We'll have a bar. But with the sportsplex right there and all the focus on, you know, kombucha's a healthy product, and it emphasizes local options. So we think that the food coming out of that bistro will probably be really similar to that. We'll look to catch folks who are working out at the sportsplex in their lunch hour. Maybe they'll grab lunch on the way away back to work. So yeah, healthy stuff, but yeah, it won't just be, the idea is not to only serve kombucha.
And my second question was, a lot of the floor space goes towards the bottling and distribution. Is that something that, I know a lot of times people like to go watch the brewing, they like to, does this become part of the experience, or is it just a distribution business?
Yeah, no, this is, I don't mean, I hope everybody's been to Singlespeed and seen their big glass walls, and you can look in. It would be very similar to that. So if you look at the floor plan, you can see we have kind of the bar where it is along the wall, and then seating going forward across the room. But then the wall between that and the brewery area would be glass. And the point would be to be able to see into it, because it is something that people don't have a lot of experience with. So a big part of what we want to do is help people get involved.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks very much, guys.
Thank you.
Any comments? Noel, Adrian? All right. I'll accept a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We are adjourned.
All, the Finance Committee to order. Ask our city clerk for roll call, please.
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mrs. Jewen?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda and the minutes of April 30th, 2018, as proposed.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Terrific. Okay. If we could get someone for a motion on the travel vouchers, please.
Madam Chairperson, we have two travel requests today. Mohamed Elaa, traffic engineer, to attend the Joint ITE, which is the Institute of Traffic Engineers International and Midwest Great Lakes District's Annual Meeting and Exhibit in Minneapolis, August 19th through the 23rd, not to exceed $1,425. Secondly, Police Officer Watson to attend the Basic IED, which is the Improvised Explosive Device Electronics Course in Des Moines, April 1st through the 6th, not to exceed $125.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Terrific. A motion? Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following preauthorizations to expend over $1,000. First is building maintenance with mountain estimated shipping handling of $2,571.14 for emergency plumbing repair for Burns Pool. Next is for the Fire Department, mountain estimated shipping handling, $2,265.47, plus $200 shipping and handling for suspension rear spring shock absorbers, shackle suspension, U-bolts, and pin springs for fire engine number 307. Next is for garage, mountain estimated shipping handling, $2,637.75 to replace universal liquid sump sensor at fuel site. Garage is the next one also, mountain estimated shipping handling of $3,335.66, plus $250 shipping and handling for particulate filter, clamp, gasket, and spark plug for garbage truck number 102. Next is from Leisure Services, a mountain estimated shipping handling not to exceed $2,600 for rental of excavator for Katuski Green Belt Project. Next is for Mayor Quentin Hart, with mountain estimated shipping handling of $4,755.38 for the Metro Coalition membership dues. Next is the Police Department, mountain estimated shipping handling, $1,621.50 for recruitment video of the Waterloo Police Department. Next is the Sewer Department, mountain estimated shipping handling of $3,692.55 for removal and installation of two 20-inch rubber expansion joints for Eastern blowers. And finally, it's from the Street Department, with the mountain estimated shipping handling of $1,920.80 to replace a broken torsions, or the broken torsion springs in overhead door of Public Works Building.
Second.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Madam Chairperson, I have a question on number three, the repairs to Burns Pool. And just curious as to, and I know we repair that pool every year, and what is the life expectancy? And what is our plan to address that in the future?
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. The specific answers as far as the ongoing efforts to keep the pool usable, Building Maintenance Department is much more active than our department in that. But long-range, we are working on a study that's been approved by council and is underway for options to replace both Burns and Gates Pool with, or three or four different configurations. We'll have to, of course, work on some funding mechanisms and ideas for that because it is going to be expensive. But we're planning and working to move forward as soon as we can.
Mr. Hudding, when do you anticipate that report coming back to council?
I'll have to check. I'm sorry, Sharon, I don't have that right with me tonight, but hopefully before too long. Thank you.
Okay. Good. Thank you very much. Does that answer your questions? Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Terrific. Okay. Budget line items to be amended, we have two of them. One is to make the motion to approve the project for the fiscal year 2018 Bridge and Culvert Repairs Project in the amount of $500,000 as submitted by Engineering Department. And second, approve the project budget amendment for the Organized Crime Enforcement Task Force to budget for additional revenue to be received and related expenses in the amount of $4,197.
Second.
Okay, thank you. There, I do have a question for Chief Trelka on that. Just wondering on the task force, where do you anticipate that money coming from and how will it be expended?
Is that the money for the, Dan Trelka, Chief of Police, for the insurance?
It is.
If I'm not mistaken, that comes from seized monies from the drug dealers.
Okay. We had a question from another council member, so does that answer the question? Terrific. Thank you very much. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Madam Chairperson, I have a follow-up question. On the bridges that we're repairing, do you know, can we get a little idea of what we're doing to those bridges and kind of what's going on with them?
Mr. Thorson?
Eric Thorson's here. This is the project that we'll actually be reading bids on tonight. We're working on several different bridges, and I'll get that list for you. Mostly, it's a lot of expansion joints that need to be repaired or replaced, and then some other railings and miscellaneous things. Comes out of our bridge inspections that we get every two years. So we're going to be working on a number of different bridges, and there's a few more that we'll work on as we have funding available to do.
Okay, thank you. Does that answer your question? Okay. All in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Terrific. We have bill payments then for bills dated as of May the 7th in the amount of $624,573.18 to be approved and forwarded to council. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hey, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our council meeting, your council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here in person.
Mr. Schimpf?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mrs. Jewen?
Here.
All right, thank you. We will now have our moment of silence. I just want to ask, there is a vigil tonight for the young man in Evansdale. If you could all keep your hearts prepared and thinking about the family. And we've actually had a tough couple of months when it comes to children in our community as well. So if you could, from the fatalities to the incidents, if you can keep that on your heart right now as we take this moment of silence. So please join me. All right, thank you. This evening's pledge will be led by Mr. Noel Anderson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept the agenda as presented, along with the minutes of April 20th.
April 30th.
April 30th and May the 1st.
Thank you.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right. First up is our proclamation for Letter Carrier Food Drive Day. I'd like to call up Jim Johnson and others to join me up front. Right. If you two gentlemen want to just come back a little bit so they can see all your smiling faces. Whereas, every year on the second Saturday in May, letter carriers across the country collect non-perishable food as part of the nation's largest one-day food drive, distributing the donations to local food banks. And whereas, the Letter Carrier Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive is just one example of how letter carriers work to make a difference in the lives of those they serve, as more than 1.6 billion pounds of food have been collected since the 1991 pilot program. than 1.6 billion pounds of food have been collected since the 1991 pilot program. And whereas, we would like to recognize all letter carriers for their hard work and their commitment to their communities. All of the food collected in our community stays in our community, and we support the carriers' efforts to help those in need in our community. Now therefore, I, Quentin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim, Saturday, May 12, 2018, as Letter Carrier's Food Drive Day, and encourage citizens of our community to support the food drive by placing non-perishable food items in or near your mailbox for pickup on Saturday, May 12. Together, we can help all those in need. So, very, very wonderful program, great opportunities for those that are food insecure in our communities, and who wants to talk a little bit about?
Hi, my name's Jim Johnson, and I'm a city letter carrier. And we want to thank you for the opportunity, for having this day. We do collect a lot of food for the food drive, and we know if you've lived in the community long enough, there's a great need for it. So, every year, we try to increase the numbers. So by nine o'clock in the morning on Saturday, if you could have your non-perishable foods within the next two days, you'll get a postcard for a reminder, and you'll also get a bag in the mail. If you would fill it up and put it by your mailbox on Saturday, we'd be glad. Myself, we have a lot of union retirees, we have the food bank and their families, we have all the letter carrier's families and friends. It takes many people to make this happen. So if you put your food out by your mailbox, we'll collect it for you, and we'll get it to the food bank, and we thank you very much.
All right, and we thank you for all of your efforts, and we hope this week is even more successful than the one prior. So, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. All right, we'd like to call up Tom and Candace and Paul as well for Bird Appreciation Week. And those representatives are from the Prairie Rapids Audubon Society, so please come on up. Hey stranger? Who's going to speak? I want you on this side. All right, then come on this side then, over here. All right, proclamation, whereas nature lovers around the world are celebrating 2018 as Year of the Bird in recognition of the 100th anniversary of the Migratory Bird Treaty Act, which supports our moral responsibility to protect bird life. And whereas Waterloo, having been officially recognized as Iowa's first bird-friendly community, has taken steps and will continue to take steps to improve conditions necessary for the health and welfare of our nesting and migratory birds. And whereas Waterloo is taking measures to educate and engage people in birding and wildlife conservation. And whereas 300 migratory and resident bird species use the various habitats in Waterloo for feeding and nesting. And whereas birds and bird-related activities have a significant economic impact. And whereas promoting abundant, sustainable bird populations and healthy habits benefits our world's biodiversity and human society. And now therefore, I, Quentin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim, May 7 through the 13, as Bird Appreciation Week. So please tell us about such an honor.
Well, since we've become a bird-friendly city the first in Iowa, the word is getting out. I see in our Iowa Natural Heritage Magazine, there's an article on there mentioning Waterloo. One of our recent parks in Waterloo's been designated as a hotspot for birding, Riverview Park, that elevates it to a new level. So people that visit the area from out of state or in the city go to a website, eBird, and they can find out what people have been seeing here. And we had, actually had somebody fly in that met, flew in from Atlanta, Georgia, for two days, she worked for CNN, to look for a little owl that ran, and she came specifically for that, stayed overnight, met people from Vermont, Chicago, other places. So they go to the website, and they're looking for hotspots, eBird, click on little points, and it shows what's available in the city for birding and those kind of activities. So being bird-friendly city is a start, something we work to improve on each year for habitat and for the benefit of birds. So we have a number of activities scheduled for this week with our Audubon and for the community, and I'll let Candace talk about that.
So starting tomorrow at 6:00 PM, the Prairie Rapids Audubon will be having a potluck. And then our program with Dr. Jim Pease, Wildlife Biologist, who is often on Talk of Iowa, will be presenting a program on Iowa rivers. And then Wednesday, we've got two field trips, one in the morning at 8:30 at Greenbelt Lake, and then one at 4:30 PM in the afternoon at Greenbelt Lake. And that is also a designated hotspot. So anybody who's interested, please join us. And then Friday, we'll also have two field trips, 7:00 AM, 7:30 AM at Greenbelt Lake. And that will be led by our Prairie Rapids photographers, of which Mr. Shulkey is, one of our notable photographers. So those who are interested in photographing birds and nature will learn some tips, and we can learn from each other that way.
Another one at night, too.
And another one in the evening at 4:30 PM as well. Saturday, we will celebrate International Migratory Bird Day at Sweet Marsh with our day-long field trips. So, part of the criteria for becoming bird-friendly Iowa City is to provide these kinds of activities for education and learning. So that is one criteria that we can help fulfill. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Paul, anything?
Oh, no, that's, no.
I just want to thank the Prairie Rapids Audubon Society for the opportunity that they've provided, and I want to thank Todd Deerfield, our city forester, who has done a good job, I think, of working with you to make this happen. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, Chief Trelka, if you'd please come up and join me. Is there anyone else here?
No, sir.
All right. This is National Police Week, Peace Officer Memorials Day. Whereas, the Congress of the United States of America has designated the week of May 13 through 19, 2018, as National Police Week, and May 16 of this year to be Peace Officer Memorials Day. And whereas, the law enforcement officers are our guardians of life and property, defenders of the individual right to be free men and women, warriors in the war against crime, and dedicated to the preservation of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas, it is known that all too often, police officers are killed in the line of duty nationwide. Our community joins with other cities and towns to honor all peace officers everywhere. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Quentin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim the week of May 13 through the 19 as National Police Week, and order all flags on all city facilities to be flown at half-staff on May 16, 2018, on Peace Officers Memorial Day. But I call on all citizens to honor and show our sincere appreciation for the police officers of their city by deed, remark, and attitude. I also call upon all the citizens to make every effort to express their thanks to our men and women who make it possible for us to leave our homes and family in safety each day and return to our homes, knowing we are protected by men and women willing to sacrifice their lives if necessary, and to guard our loved ones, our property, and government against all who would violate the law. So, that's a lot, chief. Can you tell us about this week and importantly, the 16?
Yes, sir, Mayor. We, I want to accept this proclamation on behalf of three officers we've lost in the past four years. Not all more duty-related, but have no doubt the stresses of the job contributed to their deaths. And it was Monty Ferrana, Adam Little, and Robert Greenly. And this proclamation is important for us, the week is important for us because it gives us time to reflect and honor those officers who have passed before us. So thank you.
Thank you. Could we give a round of applause for? All right, thank you. Very great proclamations this evening, very deserve it. We have, we have a couple folks that have signed up to speak to the fireworks proposal today, and you'll have to wait until we bring that up on the agenda. But we do have Mr. Youngblood that's in the audience that would like to talk to us about something extraordinary that happened the other day.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Council members, city staffers.
Can you get closer to the mic?
Yeah, sorry about that. So I'm putting a different hat on now. I'm here as the attorney for Deer Creek Development, and it's a pretty proud son. As I'm sure most of you are now aware, as we've made the press release, we were finally able to complete the three-way deal with the Muskwaki Tribe and the NCC to purchase and acquire the Greyhound Park property. And on top of that, we will be moving forward and hopefully have that out of everybody's hair and off the face of the planet within the next 60 days. You know, it's been a long, a long time in the coming. It's over eight years ago since my dad first initiated contact with the National Cattle Congress to look into purchasing that property. He's owned the Greenbelt Center property for over 12 years now. The conversation with the cattle congress probably started and stopped 100 times in the past eight years. We dealt with them, we dealt with the tribe. At times, it seemed like we would never get anywhere. I can stand here today and honestly say that the only reason that this deal ever got done was the persistence and sheer blunt will of my father. But there were a lot of people involved in the process, and it was a messy deal, and it took a lot of time to put together, and a lot of creativity to end up making it happen. The National Cattle Congress's attorney, Ken Nelson, the tribe's attorney, Mike Trinan of the Klatt Law Firm here in Waterloo, and also their Attorney General, Jay Finch, as well as the NCC Board and their chairman, Wally Mokel, and the tribal council and their chairman, Anthony Wasiskuk. So if you see any of these people in public, in a restaurant, please go up, pat them on the back, and thank them for their part that they played in finally getting this done and making this happen, because it's a huge deal for the city. I'm here on behalf of my dad. He's in the field, that's what farmers do right now, make hay while the sun shines. He wants to extend his appreciation to Mayor Hart, to the council, to Noel Anderson, and the Planning Department, for everything that you guys have done for him, not only in the past year, but in the past 12 years. It's allowed this to ultimately come to fruition. This, right here, this is private enterprise working at its best. No public TIF funds were used to purchase the dog track, none will be used to tear the building down. But the TIF funds that have been available have helped us build the roads and develop all the property adjacent to the dog track. So the stage is set, and we have an opportunity here to make something special happen, right on the southern doorstep of Waterloo. And we're very appreciative for all the help that we've had in doing that, and that starts right here in this room. Deer Creek Development and the Greenbelt Center project is proof that wisely-used TIF funds and planning can make good things happen. We thank you for your past support, for your future support, and we're excited for what's going to happen in the coming months.
And I want to say, you know, thank you to you, your father, for your diligence. You mentioned he was in the field farming, but when you take a look at what's been planted in that particular corridor and what we've been allowed to see grow there, and then from the south entryway into the city to the north, we are looking at a very special time in this city, and your diligence, you know, support, confidence, investment within the city of Waterloo is exactly the type of rebirth that we're seeing here. So we thank you so much for all your help and your support in making this deal happen. And we got some excited council folks about this as well, so thank you so much.
I hope so. We're just getting started. We're going to need more help.
Mrs. Klein?
Your dad's my hero.
He's my hero, too.
Thank him for us.
I certainly will.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the city council on non-agenda related items? Please step up to the podium, state your name for the record, and let us know your thoughts.
Hi, Mayor. Hi, Council. Jim Chapman, 224 Birch. I passed out a thing to you last week on procedures of hiring city employees. I was wondering if you were going to get me an answer. I put my email address on there and everything. Were you going to get me an answer on them?
You want to know how we hire people?
The questions I had on there, what we do when we hire, like, do we drug test them and so on and so forth?
Yes, they go through a drug test, a background check.
I was wondering, were you going to give me an answer on those six questions I had on that piece of paper I handed around last week?
I will, I will tell you, I absolutely did not follow up on that.
I got some more, I got some more copies, so.
Okay, okay.
I'll bring you some more.
Give me one. It fell off the radar, so I'll be honest.
I'll get with you.
Okay.
But I've got another question. I go to that academy on Thursday night, and every department that we go to, we need more help. We're short help. I mean, there wasn't one department that I can think of that we went to that don't need more help, you know? And I guess when it comes to budget time, do we budget, and I guess I'm kind of ignorant on the budget, but do we budget, our budget on the population? Like, we used to have 87,000 people in this town, now we got 67,000, but it seems like our city employees are just grow, grow, grow. I guess I came from a manufacturing base, and we weren't selling tractors, we got rid of people. But it seemed like it worked in reverse to the city. I guess, do we base our budget on population or what? I guess every place I went to needs help, needs more people. I don't, go ahead.
That's kind of like opposite of what you just said. You know, on one hand, you say, we don't have enough, and then we keep growing for our staff-wise. We're not growing staff-wise. Those levels have held for a while. What we are doing is taking a look at consolidating, bringing departments together, trying to see where we can see some opportunity. But I think consistently, if you go into, actually what you just did, if you go and take a look, we still have the same amount of square miles we did before. We still have roads that we need to maintain. We still have about, what is it, 63, 64 square miles that have to be maintained. So, we never really offered it person-by-person service. We have a police, we have a fire, we have roads. So, yeah, we're not growing, and we actually shaved a couple positions, if I'm not mistaken, from this budget.
Excuse me, Mayor, but it just kind of bothered me that every department we went to, they're either short one or two people, you know? And the other thing I got, you keep saying be respectful to our fellow councilmen. If you'd watched the films from last week or the week before, when one council member was speaking, another one up there sitting there shaking their head, and I think that's disrespectful. Thank you, Mayor. Have a good day.
Ended on that note, didn't you? All right, who's next?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Major Harold Poff from the Salvation Army, and I just want to take a minute to kind of clarify, set the record straight. The Salvation Army has not changed its interest in city-owned lots that are adjacent to our facility on Franklin Street. For members of the Building and Grounds Committee, who we did meet with a couple weeks back, we are in the process of preparing a strategic plan for how we would use... we are in the process of preparing a strategic plan for how we would use the lots the city has already very graciously sold us, and how we would consider disposing other real estate that is at our disposal. What happened was that Mr. Reed Kraft, who addressed the council, didn't know that I was meeting with Noel Anderson, and I didn't know that Reed was going to be addressing the council. So we mixed our signals, and I apologize for that, and we will do a better job of communicating with you the direction we're seeking to go and what we're trying to accomplish. We expect our strategic plan will be in a shape where we can present it to the council or committees or city staff, hopefully by the end of September, first part of October at the latest, and then we will know exactly what we're trying to do and try to go forward from that point. So thank you for your patience and for the time this evening.
Thank you. We, we are looking to be partners, and I know, so, yeah, it was, kind of went around, but we're here, we're committed to being partners, so just please keep communicating with folks, and we'll see something great happen.
Will do, and thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council, going a second time? Before we close out this portion of it, I just want to, anybody have something?
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Morrissey.
I just want to mention a couple of things, Mr. Mayor, and the first is that this coming Friday, the 11th, is the first Friday Lou at Lincoln Park, starts at 5:30, gets done at, at 9:30, there'll be a great band there, everybody to enjoy regardless of what the weather is, unless it's total downpour.
It's going to be great.
I know it will be, yes, it will. And then the following week will be the first week of the Riverloop Rhythms at the amphitheater, and that's what happens also to be the Bike to Work Friday. And then on the 25th of, of May, that Friday before Memorial Day, is going to be the Bike to Friday Lou event, where hopefully there'll be some excitement with some prize drawings, and that will just have to, hopefully that will develop that way. And then finally, two days from today, May 9th, is Bike to School Day, so I just wanted to add those few things. Mr. Mayor?
When is Bike to Work?
Bike to Work is on May 18th.
Okay, all right. Mr. Schmidt?
I did just want to mention, Mr. Mayor, for the record, that I had intended to bring back Councilman Jacob's resolution regarding the speeding tickets and the revenue from that, and making the effort to have that money kept, set aside in a separate fund for tax relief, but you and the city clerk advised me that that would be something we'd need a little bit more notice and a little bit more time to discuss, so I just wanted to make sure I brought that up, and that I look forward to bringing that back for that further discussion.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, can I, you have one, we can go here, Mr., because you had already spoke. Robert rules. Mr. Morrissey.
Oh, oh, okay, oh, I just was wondering regarding Councilman Schmidt's statement, it sounded like he wanted to make a motion to reconsider.
Yeah.
Is that correct, Kelly, or Miss Mayor?
Yeah, there's a, there's a couple of things procedurally we need to work out to make it mirror something that we did before. It may need to be in a form of some type of resolution versus bringing that back, so that's where we're at, and so that'll come to council. Yeah, we won't do it tonight, but that will come to council.
So, but the motion to reconsider would be out of order after tonight's meeting, correct, Kelly?
What, what was, the conversation was really not, it, it wasn't to reconsider what had happened, it was to talk about where the dollars are allocated to. So that's, we had some conversation and working towards.
Okay.
Coming here. All right, just real quickly, Paul, if you could grab that, it's in two pieces, so grab it by the little things on there.
Everybody's watching.
The dingies.
Don't drop it, whatever you do, don't drop it.
Paul's our Vanna White for tonight.
Thank you. I, 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 you know, I want, I, you know, I want, I want folks to see this, because this is a testament of the faith that people are having in the city of Waterloo, the hard work by our council, by our Planning Department, by the Small Business Administration, and Blackhawk Economic Development, so many different partners, but if you didn't know, the city of Waterloo was voted by the Small Business Administration the Small Business Community of the Year Award winners, meaning that more small businesses are tapping into the resources and coming up and growing than in any sector of the state per capita. So that's something that we really need to be excited about, thankful about, and keep pushing to help our small businesses be successful in the city of Waterloo, but this is a testament to all of you as well, so if you could give yourselves a round of applause, that's great. I feel like we need some Vanna music or something by you holding that up.
Don't drop it.
All right, yes, ma'am, we're ready.
Make a motion to close oral presentations, receive and place on file.
I can pay the bills, too. Nope. Second. All right, that motion has been made with the second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right.
Okay, make a motion to accept the consent agenda, receive it, place on file, add to it on number A1 in the amount of $624,673.18.
It's actually, um, sorry, $624,573.18.
We need to keep that number to that every week.
I still second it.
Still second it.
Still second it. All right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Is it possible to take item number, oh, my Nova's just closed, item number four, which is under appointments, and that would be, motion to approve a recommendation of appointment on the civil service list?
Wait a second, number four?
It's right before bonds.
Number four?
Oh, okay. So it's...
It's actually, it's, it's item...
I know, I'm on the consent.
To be four, correct?
So, you want to, so what do we do for this?
Do we, we take it separately?
Yep, he's asking to take it separately, so approve the consent agenda then.
Sure, so do we need to vote on that separately, or now just go?
Nope.
Does he set aside?
The rules right at the top.
All right, so we have, we, so we have, all items would take number four separately. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number four.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can we just get some overview on...
We got to bring it into play.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to approve recommendation of appointment of Sarah Kempin from the current civil service list to the position of stormwater specialist in the engineering department effective May 8th, 2018, pending successful completion of pre-employment physical and drug screening.
Second. All right, that motion's been made with the second. Questions?
So, Mr. Mayor, can we just get some overview on this position? Is this a new position? I see it's from the stormwater fee, so I would assume it was a FY 18 budget, budgeted position.
All right, Eric, give us some overview.
Hi, Eric Thorson, City Engineer. This is actually the, a replacement for a position that we had. If you remember, well, some of the council will be familiar with Phil Schubert, who previously was in the position, he left us last year, and so we've been working to replace this position. We actually specifically, a number of years ago, put the stormwater fee in place so that we could have funding to hire a person to help us with our permit requirements, and also have some funding for the various permit requirements that the city has. We had tried to, for the first few years of our permit, do this in-house with existing staff, and it just became kind of overwhelming with all the different things that are required by our permit, and hence we worked to establish the stormwater fee, to hire a position, and also have funding for permit requirements, so.
So this is not a new position, this is a replacement?
This is a replacement, yes.
All right, the questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thorson, what is the value of this position? It just says expenditure required stormwater specialist salary and benefits. What is that salary and benefit package?
You know, I don't have that with me, I apologize.
Tell us, what, what does, does this position deal with federal, state mandates that we have to deal with with regards to storm management?
It's a combination of federal and state mandates, the EPA and the Iowa DNR govern our permit, and we have these various requirements that we have to meet. And it involves a lot of inspections of our own facilities, our outfalls in our public facilities with regard to stormwater regulations. We also have a lot of work we do to inspect some of the work from contractors to make sure they're following the ordinance of the city. There's public education that we do, just, we have a stormwater hotline, so unfortunately, quite a few times a year, we get reports of some sort of a spill or something that's gotten into the storm sewer system that we have to go out and investigate, determine what's going on with that, and get that remediated if necessary and get it stopped. And so there's just a whole series of things that we have to do to meet our permit, and it takes a lot of time and a lot of staff, and actually, this position works on it full-time, and then Wayne Castle in our office also assists as necessary, so it keeps people pretty busy in order to keep up with these requirements that aren't mandated.
What happens if we don't follow the mandates with regards to our stormwater?
The, actually, the DNR can fine the city up to $10,000 per administrative order. The Iowa Attorney General's Office can fine up to $5,000 a day per violation, and the EPA can also fine up to $25,000 per day per violation. So there's some pretty significant fines, obviously, they probably wouldn't levy those immediately, but they certainly have the ability to do that very quickly if they're not happy with the things that the city is doing.
And this position is not one that requires general fund dollars?
No, it does not, it's entirely funded on the stormwater fee.
All right, other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, we do have Mrs. Kempin in the audience today, could you stand up? We want to thank you for coming to the city of Waterloo to work, you have a very important job, keep us out of trouble, keep us in compliance, but also keep the city moving forward and, and thinking about how we can work together with businesses and residential developments and all those things together to make win-win situations, so bless you and thank you for joining our team. That motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specification, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Council questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
All right, item carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file, instruct the city clerk to read the bids and refer to city engineer for review.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Do you want to do a voice call?
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. When you just get a napkin over a mistake you just made, it kind of took me away.
The estimate was $223,225. Our first bidder was Kramer &amp; Associates Incorporated of Grimes, Iowa, they provided 5% security, their bid amount was $185,335. Second bidder was Peterson Contractors Incorporated of Ryanbeck, Iowa, provided 5% security, their bid amount was $124,676. Final bidder was Boulder Contracting of Grundy Center, Iowa, they provided 5% security, their bid amount was $175,740.
All right, thank you. I was remiss in my duty. Ms. Chitara Mayberry, would you please stand? I looked directly at you the whole time and forgot to mention, she's been appointed to our Human Rights Commission, we thank you so much for your willingness to serve, and we look forward to greater efforts and seeing you around City Hall a little more often, so thank you so much. All right, number three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schimpf?
Number three is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that is for the FY 2018 Sidewalk Repair Program, Zone 8, contract number 948. Second.
That motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda with regards to our sidewalk program? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
Motion to close the hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Council, any questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to make a motion to receive and file, instruct city clerk to read bids and refer to city engineer for review.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Clerk?
Our estimate was $323,769.45. We had one bidder, B&amp;B Builders and Supply of Waterloo, Iowa, they provided 5% security. Their bid amount for Division 1 was $11,473.98, Division 2, $328,449.40, total for both, $339,923.38.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Number four is Waste Management Administration HVAC cooling system, which has been canceled due to rescheduling bid opening and public hearing till later date.
He only has to read that? Okay. All right, five, six, and seven, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving supplemental agreement number one with Wayne Klassen Engineering and Surveying Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa, in amount not to exceed $47,000 for geotechnical services easement preparation and final design for the fiscal year 2017 Hammond Avenue Bridge Replacement over St. Creek, contract number 922, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. And next is a resolution approving the contract bonds and certificate of insurance of Parking Incorporated, DBA Keck Incorporated, in conjunction with the Parking Access and Revenue Control System and related parking lot improvements at the Waterloo Regional Airport, in the amount of $203,564, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. And number seven is a resolution approving engineering services agreement with Wayne Klassen Engineering and Surveying Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of $22,000 for the fiscal year 2018 Waterloo Yard Waste Water and Sanitary Sewer Extension, contract 952, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Any questions on these three items?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm already on the airport board, so I have heard about this. But Keith, can you just give the quick, kind of what we're doing with that and how it's going to be a good thing for?
Just no, sir. Good evening, Keith Caspar Airport Director. Last week, the City Council approved the contract for the award for the Parking Access and Revenue Control System or Parking Lot Equipment Replacement. And so this is the contracts, bonds, and certificate of insurance phase of that project, of which they were on site today. These folks are getting ready to go. So as long as we can approve this tonight, we'll have the bonds in place and ready to go.
And then you also have potentially a concept for overall landscape type of signage project that's in potentially partnership with this one, right?
That is correct, Mayor. We are partnering hopefully with Blackout County Gaming Association, provided that our application meets muster with their office to expand that project as we are, I think, truly the front door of our community to beautify the parking lot where the land side of the airline pasture, terminal lighting, pavement preservation, monument sign, things like that, to kind of put a different face on the front of the terminal building itself.
All right, thank you.
Fly AOL, ALO.
Absolutely. Any other questions on these three? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number eight, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Amis?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the second time in ordinance amending the 2008 Traffic Code, Section 540, obedience to official traffic control devices by adding subsection 58A, Dubuque Road and Osage Road, full actuated. Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Sandy, any timing issues with this?
Sandy Greco, Interim Public Works Director. We have not heard from the railroad yet, so they do not have their preemption.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, would I like to make a motion to suspend the rules? Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
All right, thank you. Number nine, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number nine is a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the second time in ordinance amending ordinance Number 5079 as amended, City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4, approving rezoning 0.87 acres, commercial district for construction of a multi-tenant retail center. And that is for the request by Embankment LLC to rezone 0.87 acres from R4 CZ, multiple residence conditional zoning district to C2, commercial district for construction of a multi-tenant retail center located west of 1203 West Ridgeway Avenue.
Mr. Mayor? Second.
All right. So motion's been made with the first and second. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to, I'm looking at the numbers here, and instead of it being 0.87, it's supposed to be .087. That is a big difference as far as land goes.
Is that right now?
I think I said it one way one time and the other way the other time. So yeah, it should be 0.87.
Oh, duly noted.
Yes.
Got it. Oh, shoot. Let me tell you what I just did. So the noted, so noted.
Oh, that's why, yeah, because it is .087.
It is, man.
That's correct.
All right, so we have it.
0.87, but here it says .087.
We have it noted correctly. Noel, that'll be $10. All right, so we have that. It's been noted. Questions? Second time it's been here. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I think we hear last week, one week was all right, two weeks they need to move or...
I think we've got somebody here.
Is there someone that want to speak to the timeliness? You need to move forward? Or is that what we heard last week? Don't be shy.
Fred Mahi, 4566 Whispering Pines Circle, Cedar Falls, Iowa. I'm representing Mr. Hogan and Embankment in the marketing of these properties. And we've got prospective tenants that are real strong in their interest. And I met with one this morning out of the area. And they'd like to see this up this year. And one has got some considerations with their lease expiring the end of the year. And so delays in getting started only make it more difficult for us to get it on the tax rolls for you guys and gals for 2018.
All right, thank you, sir.
We appreciate your efforts here and understand we don't want to abuse the opportunity to waive the second or the third reading.
All right, all right, thank you very much. Yes, sir.
And we have not heard from any of the neighbors. I know Councilman Schimpf and all those previous folks that had been concerned about this. I'm sorry, I have my finger on the button. There have not been any complaints. This is a sidebar conversation. There have not been any complaints or comments, negative comments from the neighbors on this, like there have been from some of the previous tenants, was the point I was trying to make.
Noel Anderson, City Planning Development Director. That is correct. At the planning commission, it was recommended six to nothing, and there was no opposition there. There was a few neighbors there that made comments, but they did not state any opposition to the project.
Thank you.
All right.
We've had meetings with the neighbors. They've called and we've met with them. And they're all, you know, real friendly towards this project. They like this far better than Casey's. And, you know, their concerns are traffic, but that's an issue, it's a different issue with Ridgeway. You know, it's just, it's a busy street, but they're, they are hopeful that the city is going to be able to solve the issues with that and the study that they're doing. But that's separate from this.
All right, thank you. Where are we at? Do we do a motion?
Did we vote on that?
Someone need to suspend it?
Did we vote on the first reading?
Okay, so I make a motion to suspend rules. Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Schimpf?
No.
Didn't pass tonight, so the reading did, but you'll have to come back next week. All right. All right, number 10, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the second time in ordinance amending ordinance Number 5079 as amended by, or as amended, City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4, approving a rezone of certain property located adjacent to 5050 Folk Road on a request by City of Waterloo to rezone two lots of 0.50 acres and 0.54 acres for a total of 1.04 acres from A1 Agricultural District to R2, one and two-family resident district directly adjacent to 5050 Folk Road.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Council? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second. Second.
It doesn't make a difference. Well, is there, you probably, is there someone representing this project? Any? Noel, any? All right, so no hurry. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mrs. Jewen?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Schimpf?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Amis?
No.
All right, thank you. Number 11?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time in ordinance amending the City of Waterloo Code of Ordinances by amending the Title 5 Police Regulations, Chapter 2, General Offenses, Section 13 Fireworks, subsections BE, F, and adding a new subsection G. Second.
All right, that motion has been made with the second. Mr. Amis, you want to tell us exactly what's being proposed?
Yes, Mayor. I believe I've stated this before, but there are some constituents out there who are desiring to at least have fireworks on the Fourth of July. Right after we passed the ban, I had individuals coming at me wanting to know why we did that. I explained to them why we did it. We had to do it because of timeliness and making sure that we did not revert back to the state's actual ordinance that they had or the rules that they had. And I told them at that time that I would bring it back up again to the council. Didn't know if we would have enough votes to pass it or not, but I did request that it be put on the agenda.
And what does this do? So is it a certain timeframe?
Yes, what the request is, is this for the Fourth of July from 9:00 AM until 11:00 PM on the Fourth. There was also some discussion about actually having a rain date for that. And I'm sure there's going to be more discussion on that tonight before we're all said and done.
Okay. All right, we also, so before we brought up our folks, just wanted to clarify that so you know exactly what's being done here. Right now, it is a proposal from 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM on July 4th to be able to display fireworks. If there is a rain date, then I guess my office and with the chief and with the chiefs, or the chiefs. We will come up with an appropriate rain date. But we have Mr. Goings, you are up first to comment on this item.
As most of you know, I stand before you as a person with PTSD and fireworks are a trigger.
Name and...
Oh, sorry about that, Mr. Mayor. Mike Goings, 1203 West Second Street and a service dog Apollo. And in my handout, there's some old information that I discussed last year when you were talking about the ban. And then there's also some new information.
Is this it?
Yep.
Because we didn't have a name on here.
Yeah, I forgot that too. So it, there is also petitions in the back that I happened to run across online. And if you look at the signatures, the number of signatures on the for and against ban, the ban would be significant of the people for the ban. So after last year, we saw why July 4th won't work. And I would urge the council members that went through it last year to share, if you haven't already, with the new council members what all you went through. And a question I've asked several times without getting an answer is, you have the ban on fireworks on city property. Why is my property or any homeowner's property less important that we don't have that option for the ban if you change it to July 4th? And then, I mean, a neighbor can light aerial fireworks right off, you know, right next to somebody's house, you know, as long as they're on their property. And there's nothing that that neighbor would have a chance to do, except for leave. And the question to the change of the ordinance as to why do fireworks need to be shot off at 9:00 in the morning? I, you know, dark is the time when fireworks get lit off. You don't see the Bucks having their shows during the day. And there are several other points I'd like for you to consider. Not every family has the means to get out of Waterloo on those days when fireworks would be legal, whether it be money problems or they have to work. So, but if they have somebody in their family that affects, that fireworks affects them, the best is to get out of town, but not everybody has that option. And that's why I also disagree with having a rain date. Because for some people, if they are having money problems, it's one time out of town and that's it. So if that rain date comes up, then they would be stuck in town. And so, and the, like if we get tickets for a play or sporting event or concert outside of the city, those don't come with rain dates if there's inclement weather in Waterloo. So there would be that added expense to those families that may not be able to afford it. They, with the fireworks, we saw it last year, that even if you allow on Fourth of July, it's not going to, they're going to be lighting them off from the time, from June 1st when they get the sale. So that, you know, the ban or allowing it, I don't think that's going to change anything, especially in my neighborhood. There are other fireworks options for people other than unless they just want to blow stuff up. The Waterloo Bucks, they have nine scheduled nights that they're going to have fireworks, the display fireworks, which are a lot more beautiful, I hear, than what the consumer ones, you know, they're a little bit more power to them. If we look at last year, there was, leading up to the Fourth, there was July 1st at the If we look at last year, there was, leading up to the Fourth, there was July first at the River Loop, July second at Bamboo Ridge, and then also on July Fourth, they had them at Sunnyside Country Club, too. I know that Prairie, Pinnacle Prairie had fireworks, VGM had fireworks. So people, there's enough fireworks out there for people to get their fireworks fixed without having to bother their neighbors who are littering, you know, putting the litter from the fireworks in other people's property. And with display fireworks, it's easier for us that are affected by fireworks, because I know that when the Bucks are gonna have fireworks, that people advertise them, the bigger fireworks in advance. And so it is something that I can plan to shut the window, turn the stereo up, leave town if I have to for an hour, you know, so. So that's the big difference between display fireworks and the consumer fireworks. I never know when one's gonna go off. As I showed last year, that, you know, aerial fireworks, you can hear them three quarters of a mile away. So, so that's, that's pretty effective, you know, that, why, why should ban? And if, after watching all the display fireworks, people still want to blow stuff up, there's towns that, that will allow fireworks to be lit off, or they can simply go out in the county and they can light them off when, where there's nobody around, so, thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you. Next, we have Matt Reisetter that is here. If you would please come on up.
Mayor, Council, thank you for your time. I've got some sheets to hand out. If Chief, you'd help me with that. Twenty-five for y'all up there. I'm sure the middle people get them. And I've got fifteen for y'all back here if you'd like one. Matt Reister, forty-five eleven Ranchero Road, Cedar Falls, Iowa. I'm one of four owners of Crossroads Fireworks at twenty nineteen Crossroads Boulevard. I'm a ministry director. One of my partners is a realtor, another partner leads, he, he's a front of house guy for bands out of Nashville, and the other one sells art on cruise ships. So we obviously have fire arc, firework owners in our pedigree, right? Not at all, but a great opportunity came up last year. We're all from around here, and we had a fun time with what ended up being the largest fireworks store in the state of Iowa. We didn't even try, and that's what happened. We had customers that we know of, because they called specifically and said, "We're on our way over," once they found out when we were open, that came as far as Webster City, Alamo Key County, lots of customers from O'Wine, lots of customers from the Squawkey, the Cedar Rapids and Iowa City area, and assumed that they did more than just buy fireworks when they came, bought gas, stopped for dinner, stopped and bought some things at the shops that we have in the Crossroads area. And so not only are we excited to help people who want to do fireworks and celebrate our nation's birthday, but we're excited to be part of generating a little bit of economic activity here in the Waterloo area. We signed a permanent lease for our store last November, and so we're gonna be a fixture here for a long time to come, and we're excited to call Waterloo our home. This sheet that I've handed out is just briefly, I, I sent it to council members, and I assume some of you, I've heard back from who've been able to look at it, I appreciate that. Before I go into this, let me just say, the city's been great to work with. Kelly last year, as we were getting these rules put together at the last minute and kind of scrambling, we ran into a couple of road bumps on our side, and they were great to work with. Chris Ferguson, the Fire Marshal, has, has been nothing but helpful in terms of helping us understand regulations and what we need to be doing, and Greg Allhelm with the, the Code Department has been great. And so anyway, we're excited to, to continue on. We'll be open June first again. The sale, the sale dates are up there just for information. And last week, when we were at the work session, it was mentioned that all the big cities in Iowa have banned fireworks completely. That's not absolutely true. And there's a list of some of them that have not banned fireworks and their dates. There are also, there was some conversation about what are the communities around Waterloo doing for legal dates? Obviously, there's Cedar Falls, who, who has no usage dates, but there are usage dates in Denver, Evansdale, and Hudson. There was also a comment that public opinion on fireworks is in favor of banning fireworks. Actually, there was an Iowa poll commissioned by the Des Moines Register in February of twenty eighteen, so that is after this first fireworks season. And you can see the results there. Fifty-three percent support legal fireworks, thirty-nine would repeal legal fireworks, and there were eight percent undecided. The conversation at the work session last week also came up that there are some public costs incurred. It's interesting to compare Waterloo and Cedar Falls complaint call numbers, okay? Waterloo had seven eighty-four, I heard last week, eight or nine hundred, somewhere in that ballpark, although they only allowed five days of usage. Cedar Falls had sixty-one complaint calls, which is less than a tenth of Waterloo's number despite having two-thirds of the population. And according to city officials, most of those calls were outside the permitted hours, and so rule breakers are gonna be rule breakers, no matter what the rules are, right? And, and so a ban doesn't necessarily fix that. Based on these numbers, it appears that a longer legal use might result in fewer calls to the police. And, and a ban or a shortened time actually invites calls to police officers. I have several friends that are police officers in Waterloo here, and they would concur with that. And, and I don't, I haven't talked to Chief Chalka, but I know he said last week that he preferred regulation over a ban, and I wonder if, if that's not part of the reason why. There were zero fires, zero medical calls in Blackhawk County, as Chief Trelor mentioned last week. The ones that were caused by fireworks in other communities, there was one in Cedar Rapids, they were lighting fireworks off in their house. And so you can't necessarily fix all those problems with a ban. People are gonna do stupid stuff. A lot more fires are started by people who drop a cigarette in their home than who light a firework and start something on fire, and we certainly wouldn't ban smoking for all people just on the premise of cigarettes start fires once in a while. I want to thank Mr. Goings for his service, and we respect the folks who have served and, and, and who have suffered from PTSD. We had a lot of them in our store as customers, who said that if they just knew what was coming, it would help them, and so we're gonna encourage our customers to be good neighbors. And would ask you to consider actually extending beyond just the one day and the rain day. The rain day's gonna be an administrative and communication headache, and thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Is there any, anyone else that would like to comment? Would you, sir? Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Earl Ramos. I represent Ray's Supermarket here in Waterloo, nineteen seventy-five Franklin. I found out today that the current, what is it, the zoning has been changed, and that was an extension of the business that we were planning on doing, and there's no grandfathering clause. We talk about how small businesses, growing up, and how we need to promote small business, but that is now gonna take away from a small business that invested. So is there an option for that to be grandfathered, or what can be done about that?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So we did not change the zoning classification. The council actually changed the, the location allowance of fireworks in the city code of ordinances, which does not allow grandfathering like the zoning ordinance would, so I don't know. Dave Zeller for once to talk on that as well. Simply put, we did not change the zoning ordinance, we changed the city code of ordinances. The zoning ordinance allows grandfathering, the city code of ordinances does not.
What did we do?
We, so he cannot sell unless it's an industrial area.
And so, so right there, I mean, that was something, I mean, the fireworks, you order them months and months ahead of time. And I'm just now finding out, I didn't know that there was, you know, any meeting about this in December. I found that out today. So now we have this inventory that should be on its way anytime now, and what do we do with it? We can't sell it. We've spent the money, you know, we've allocated extra money for, you know, setting up for fireworks, for advertising, for different things. And that's not the only location that's set up like that, you know, that has done these things. There's other stores out here that have done the same thing, you know.
I will refer you to Mr. Anderson. But it's pretty much, pretty much our code, and this was down, what, five, six?
December.
December, six, six months ago, almost half a year ago, so I don't, I don't know. That was council's will at the time.
Okay, is there any way to open that back up?
If one of these council members wants to bring that back, but right now, the only thing we're talking about is the ability to be able to dis, to, to shoot them off within the city limits. So I would have you get with your council person.
Okay, so, I guess I, I'm not real sure on how it works. Like, okay, so it's based on what the, the property is categorized, is that correct?
Correct.
It's commercial or?
Versus industrial versus retail, if I'm not mistaken. But right now, the only thing we're talk, we're not talking about the sale of them. We're only talking about the ability to be able to fire them off. So, you know, the forum for this one and what we're voting for is completely different. But I would probably, like I said, have you get with your council person that represents your area and see if, it'll be Mr. Amos, and get with him and see if, if there's any traction to, to bring that back. So that's about all we can do at this point, and what we're voting on is not portion to that, it's just focus on the firing of them.
I just think that it's a good thing to do, you know what I mean? It brings business to these smaller stores, you know, if this is things that the city needs, then let's support our small businesses, you know.
Way to tie, way to tie that back in there. All right, thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I called Leanne Evans, so please, five minutes, please. Jerry Thornsberry, seven oh four Sheridan Road. And I appreciate the compromise brought forward regarding restricting fireworks to one whole day, and lordy, we certainly need more compromises. Tonight, though, I speak against that compromise and ask you to pass an ordinance banning all personal use fireworks in Waterloo for the following reasons. One, all citizens have a right to peace and tranquility in their homes and on their property. Those who choose to buy and fire essentially a missile loaded with a variation of gunpowder from nine AM to eleven PM, even for one day, infringes upon those rights. As you know, the first stated purpose of the city's zoning ordinance shall be to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of all citizens. Second reason, what about the veterans and others who suffer from PTSD? What about disabled citizens who, like my nephew, whose hearing is so acutely sensitive, he must wear noise-canceling headphones day and night and take a mild anti-anxiety drug to survive the noise? What about those disabled citizens who have no ability to stand before you tonight and have their say? Does their distress matter? What about a friend who relives the loss of a family member each time she hears the next M-150 explode? What about our citizens, young and old, with severe health problems that become extremely agitated with the noise? What about our parents trying to get their children to sleep that night? What about our pets who must be sedated oftentimes at their peril to their own health? Do they matter? Shouldn't all citizens matter? Third, are you listening, reflecting, and considering the input and feedback from our fire chief and our police chief? They are the professionals directly charged with protecting all the citizens of Waterloo. Do their opinions matter, and how much will your decision cost the departments? Fourth reason, what about all of the residual debris created by these exploding fireworks? You know, those missiles loaded with a variation of gunpowder? Those persons exploding these fireworks often cannot police the area, even if they had a mind to, because they have no clue as to where their firework landed. Maybe in a neighbor's fenced yard or on the roof three doors down. Who knows? So alas, the debris remains as a reminder that someone's personal freedom merits more than the peace and tranquility of all citizens. Fifth, we all don't live in the country any longer. Most of us live in established neighborhoods with our houses built about ten feet apart. I am dumbfounded that the council would think that this potential compromise means it, it is okay to disrupt the peace and tranquility of every citizen using the rationale that those who bought the fireworks should be allowed to fire them, and then if it rains, allows, allowing this misery the following Saturday. Do dollars spent by individuals matter more than the distress incurred by all citizens because of their decision to buy a product? I get this, that it's a tradition in America to celebrate the, excuse me, the Fourth with fireworks. Organized and choreographed shows have delighted people for decades. This is celebrating the coming together of our founding, our founding of our nation. There are many shows downtown, at Sunnyside Golf Courses, many other places in the city. Why aren't organized collective firework shows enough? They are designed to bring the community together. Personal use fireworks are just an outrageous nuisance. Abiding by this half-baked idea foisted on us by our state lawmakers, justified by either a potential increase of state revenues or a misplacement of individual freedom is crazy-making. I plead with you to listen to not only our fire and police chiefs, but also the citizens you represent. Consider the number of complaints received, and I think they represent more citizens' resistance than any other issues we've had in recent memory. Pass the ordinance now for a complete ban of personal use fireworks. Stand up for the majority who don't want these fireworks, and stop disrupting our lives for even one day. Do the right thing to protect the peace and tranquility of all of our citizens. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Second time. All right, Council, this has been on our, on our dockets for a little while now. We've talked about it, we've heard about it, now is the moment of truth. Any comments before we finally take a vote?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So just, as I mentioned last week, we're kind of going back to last year's deja vu, I guess, open this can of worms up again, but, you know, this wasn't anything that the city did wrong. This is something that the state pushed down onto us so they could make some revenue, and then we were supposed to pick up the pieces and deal with it, police it, which does cost us a lot of money. And so for us to say that, well, we just gotta comply, so the state, state then should have then said, "We're gonna go ahead and reimburse you for your extra policing cost." They did not. They just assumed that we would just suck it up once again and move on. So if it's, then we have to deal with this. First of all, for someone just to, next door to me, fire off any kind of firework, they're violating my right to privacy. You don't have a right to disturb the, the public quiet, and just to fire that off, I think, goes above board. Secondly, any kind of missile you shoot off, the ones that I picked up in my yard and my roof, every time you shoot one of those off, how do you know where that's gonna go? How do you possibly pick it up? You can't. So you are intentionally littering. So, Council, if you vote for this tonight, then you are voting to allow people to intentionally litter on our yards. I don't, I think that's against the law. The increased public safety costs, you know, when, when this happens, we are, we are going to have a lot of increased calls. That's gonna translate to a lot of increased cost of our police officers and possibly fire. Who's gonna pay for that? Who is gonna pay for the increased police cost? Those who are selling the fireworks, those who are buying them, and what's the arrangement? I don't think there's an arrangement to cover the increased costs to police the situation. It's then on the Waterloo taxpayer once again. Lastly, as we've heard, we've had soldiers that have been in some very dramatic situations. They come back with different conditions. You know, having a scheduled fireworks at nine PM is one thing, because you know it's gonna happen. But to be on edge, and you never know when one's going off and how that affects those soldiers and those pets, that's a whole nother thing that I think is truly unfair to our veterans. So I would ask Council, I would ask you to use common sense, and once again, follow Cedar Falls' lead on this and vote no.
Well, maintain what we have. So, so if there's, so, so currently, there is a complete ban, so we're moving to amend it, so that's what we have right now. Any other comments before we vote on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I know that I had talked to Councilman Amos about this and had suggested some amendments, but I'm really swayed by Mr. Goings and by Ms. Thornsberry, and some comments also that were made last year at a word meeting that I had with people who varied between banning or just having it restricted like four or five hours on July Fourth. And I believe when we passed this in December, the thinking was, well, we tried five days, nobody wanted a all, you, you know, the full thirty-eight days or however many days it was at that, or, and it will be, but we had said, "Let's, we need to ban this, and we see how it works." So I am gonna join, excuse me, Mr. Amos, but I'm gonna join Mr. Jacobs in opposing the changes.
Mr. Mayor?
I don't, I feel like I'm emotional right now.
Who's next? Me?
Who's next?
Mr. Mayor, I am still in shock. This could be a defining moment. But I do have a que, and I am totally sympathetic and understanding of those that this is harmful for their mental health or whatever. But I'm wondering, is there any way, is there any compromise that's acceptable at this point? And would the limiting of hours be problematic for police and fire? Because I, I heard Mr. Goings saying that if they knew when it was coming, it would be more helpful, so if we limit, because I also understand the other side of the issue, where there are people that really want to enjoy the Fourth of July holiday by the fireworks. But I, like others, am probably leaning more the other way at this point. Unless there is an opportunity for compromise that's be acceptable, and I guess I would ask Mr. Jacobs if that's something he thinks is possible.
Well, to five days, to no days, to one day, that is a compromise. We, this is, I'm sorry, Mrs. John, but this is the situation.
But they talked before that I can understand the nine to eleven is just sitting on edge all day. I appreciate that. If it was limited to nine to eleven at night, is that possible? Or would that create so many problems with trying to enforce the rule that it would not be?
If they could go out in the country from nine to eleven and shoot them off, go for it, but I think we should be consistent with a lot of areas, a lot of cities. Clive, Des Moines, Johnston, Polk City, Urbendale, Waukees, West Des Moines, Windsor Heights, Cedar Falls. A lot of, a lot of cities just said, "We just can't deal with this. There's too many costs, there's too many people affected by it." The country would be one thing, but, you know, Kelly shoots it off right next, next door to me, and, and, you know, I'm upset. We just caused too many, it's just problematic to, I'm just gonna speak for my word. It's problematic to the folks in my word.
So, Mrs. Klein.
This has been just one of those issues where I've gone back and forth over and over. When I was walking door to door, I came upon a gentleman on Rainbow Drive who is suffering the effects of Agent Orange, and his prognosis is not good at all, and he's also got PTSD, and his neighbor just could not leave those rockets alone. And he had to move out of his house for about a week. He'd even spoken to the neighbor, and it didn't seem to matter. I, I don't know. Mrs. Thornsberry makes good remarks here. Also, I was thinking just silly, simple things. Our condominium association put on a roof last year that was fifty thousand dollars. I don't think I want all those fireworks landing on a fifty thousand dollar roof. I'm also a person who supports business. I'm very much the American way. Get a business and get it going. This business of saying it's only on the Fourth and the Fourth travels, and if it's a rain date, then when's the rain date, and what if the rain date gets rained out? And then it just gets very complicated, so I think at this point, I'm joining Mr. Jacobs.
And?
And Mr. Marcy.
And Mr. Morrissey.
I'm sorry.
Could there be a group hug?
I had to do that.
Can I just ask a question? I mean, I'm very sympathetic of the, the veterans and I'm very sympathetic of, uh, animal owners, because I was one for a long time. But going back to the numbers, um, and I don't know if this is for the chief or whoever, but the seven hundred and eighty-four complaint calls during the summer work, summer fireworks season, was that during the whole five weeks? Or where did that seven eighty-four come from? Can somebody tell me?
I think that was from...
Certainly wasn't from the five days, no.
Dan Trelk, Chief of Police. No, it wasn't from the five days. I want to say it was from, uh, the, the whole period that the state allowed them, if I'm not mistaken.
Because, you know, the, the, the thing that troubles me about this from a purely expense standpoint, fellow budget person, is whether you do a complete ban or whether you set it open for five weeks, I think you're still going to have the same complaints. You had all these complaints last year, not because of the five days versus being zero, but because the state allows Mr. Reaster and other people to sell them for five weeks. So until you fix that problem, you're not going to fix this part of the problem. I'm not going to argue about the, the, the infringement on the, the rights of Ms. Thornsberry and other people, but from a purely cost standpoint, and I think that's probably why the two chiefs are supportive of some level of compromise rather than outright ban, because you're still going to have that. People are still going to violate the laws. They always have, they always will, which is not a reason to capitulate and go five weeks. But I do, I, I think you're just, if you're using that for a reason, I don't think that holds water.
Well, Mr. Mayor, um, Councilman Schmidt, I've given several reasons in every single rea-
That's the only one I was questioning.
Let me finish. So every single reason is a reason to ban fireworks. And I've given you four reasons. Now, look, we cannot really stop the sale of fireworks. That's not in our realm. We can't control that, but I think we can control what we can control. And we can control about not letting people ban, uh, shoot these off. We can ban the fireworks, works to control them the best we can. Otherwise, you, what don't you, uh, control? You're going to legalize it? We can't legalize everything. We try to control things and police things the best we can, and we respond to the residents and what they want here. And I still believe, maybe not in every ward, but I believe the folks I've talked to in my ward, there are some that do want fireworks, but the majority do not for the reasons that I've given. So I say, control what we can control. Let folks go out in the country and shoot them off, buy them and shoot them off, that's great, go for it. But for all, for the other reasons, not to rehash, I think we need to protect those folks, and I am that voice. Mr. Mayor?
Mr., Mr., we'll go to Mr. Morrissey, then we'll go to Mr. Amos, and then we need to, uh, vote at some point.
I, I just wanted to add that, um, in our discussions that we had before, it was really recognized that prior to the legislature doing what they did in twenty seventeen, fireworks were legal in entire state Iowa. And then it opened it up to sales, and then it opened it up, hey, cities, you get to go ahead and, and decide how you're going to do this, but i- if you want to, you can make it, uh, all these days, um, that, uh, the handout here has, has talked about. So then last year, we allowed it and for five days, we saw what happened. And then we decided as a council in December, uh, to do, uh, what we did, and that was to ban it, but also to restrict the sales to, as the, um, ordinance says, to M-one light industrial, M-two heavy industrial district, or M-dash-two, uh, comma, P-planned industrial district. But it also added, and to, to speak to the point that Councilman Schmidt and, and Councilman Jacobs were referring to, any retailer or community group selling consumer fireworks must prominently display at the entrance and exit sites, signs informing customers that the use of consumer and display fireworks are banned within the corporate limits of the city of Waterloo, unless said usage is allowed by a permit. So there, there is a cautionary statement to anybody buying fireworks that you can't use them in the city of Waterloo. So if you're going to use them and you're going to use them legally, you need to go find someplace else to use them other than in Waterloo. And I, that is, those are requirements that are, uh, there for the sellers of fireworks. And we haven't even given this a chance, this, this ordinance that we passed in December to work, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Uh, Mr. Amos, I did let him go prior to you going, since you were the person that did it. So I yielded that so you can have concluding remarks.
That's fine, Mayor. And, um, one of the things that I firmly believe is, is the will of this council is very important. Um, I did bring this up simply because of, I have constituents out there who have the desire, veterans included in that. People with PTSD have come to me and said they don't mind it for a one-day instance. So for me, you know, how, however this council votes, I'm fine with it. I'm not mad at anyone. I brought it up for my constituents.
You're going to talk to him after the meeting?
I'm sure.
I'll bring, getting it back though, huh?
Uh, and just- So, anyway, let's just vote, see where it goes.
All right. And just really quickly, um, uh, the clerk received a call from Mary Lee and Sam Borenmeyer of Sunrise Boulevard, and they are in opposition to the fireworks ordinance, as neighbors shoot them off at all hours and fireworks have been landing on the roof of their home. Madam Clerk?
Can we, uh, restate what the motion is?
Uh, the motion is to, uh, have a one-day opportunity to display fireworks with a, uh, rain day to be decided, uh, but also to display those fireworks on the Fourth of July from nine AM to eleven PM that evening only.
Mrs. Jewen?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Schimp?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, so, uh, the motion fails. Um, great conversation, great homework. Uh, thank you. Number twelve.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Number twelve is a hearing on order assessing civil penalty to Jim's Foods, four thirty-seven Sullivan, Waterloo, Iowa, for sale of tobacco to minor violation, first offense. And I move to open the hearing. Is that correct?
Yep.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item?
I'm a daughter of my dad, I mean, Sayah Joffrey, who, uh, sell tobacco to a minor. And, um, he said that he explained to me how it happens. Uh, as a college student, I totally understand the laws and regulations and, um, how like it's wrong to sell a minor, a tobacco to a minor or a liquor. But he said that he was really sick when he was selling tobacco. And, um, he feel guilty about it, and he just asking for one more chance and, um, waived three hundred dollars because he's not able to pay that much amount of money at this point. So I think that everyone just get another chance, because this is his first offense.
Okay. And, uh, thank you very much, um, Chief, or anyone you have comments. Three hundred for the first offenses. Anyone? Mr. Zeller for my apologies.
No, that's- Dave Zeller, City Attorney. This is all brought under, uh, Section four fifty-three A of the state code. Selling tobacco to a minor is a simple misdemeanor. And he's already entered a plea of guilty, did so, uh, on April third of this year, and he paid the fine. But also, there's a civil penalty that goes along with this. If he chooses not to pay the civil penalty, then, uh, his license to sell tobacco products will be forfeited and suspended for fourteen days. And he'll still owe the civil penalty. The civil penalty under four fifty-three A is not waivable. So, uh, he wanted a chance to explain things today, and he certainly is entitled to that under the law, but, uh, I just want to make sure everybody understands that if you try to waive this, you really can't. And if he doesn't pay it, he gets his tobacco license suspended for fourteen days, and that'll probably cut into the profits quite a bit. The state comes down hard on these people, and, uh, they try to keep people from, excuse me, selling tobacco products to minors. And, uh, this is the way to do it.
All right, so we really can't do anything about that at this point based upon the state.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, your portion, you have a question for them right now?
Okay.
If not, your portion comes next. All right, any other questions from anyone?
Mr. Mayor, motion to close the hearing.
And receive oral comments.
And, um, receive written and-
Just oral.
Oral comments, oral comments.
Motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And move to make a resolution approving order assessing civil penalty in the amount of three hundred dollars to Jim's Foods, four thirty-seven Sullivan, Waterloo, Iowa, for sale of tobacco to minor violation, first offense.
Second. That motion's been made with the second. Mr. Morrissey?
Mr. Mayor, I was wondering, uh, if this three hundred dollar civil, uh, fine is, uh, can be, uh, paid off in installments rather than just one lump sum?
Is that with us or with the state?
There's no, no provision against that. We have accepted, uh, installments on tobacco and alcohol violations before. They were up in the, you know, fifteen hundred dollar level back then, but we certainly wouldn't have any objection against it. They are due in thirty days, though, from-
Can you talk to, can you talk to, um, the lady, please?
Yeah, we, we have.
And go over and-
Sure.
Communicate about that, is that fine? All right, thank you, Mr. Morrissey. Uh, any other discussion? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
I'm so, I'm sorry, can you, Kelly, what are we voting on?
On the-
Three hundred dollar-
To waive the three hundred dollars?
No, no, no.
The resolution ordering-
Approving it.
Approving order of assess, assessing civil penalty.
Okay, yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimp?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, he will talk to you soon as this is over, okay?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.